Our property is our property in 1989. We bought it for a long-term investment and also as a legacy to our children. We are totally opposed to Senate Bill 236. We don't feel that the state has a right to tell us what we can do with our property that we pay the mortgage on every month and that we pay the taxes on. If Governor O'Malley would like to share in our mortgage and in our taxes, then he's more than welcome to come and sit at our dining room table and discuss it with us. But until then, we are totally opposed to the bill.
Anybody in the third row?
I'm Amy Stubbs Myers. I'm here representing my Indian father. I'm here because I am eternally privileged in this entire mess. I'm proud of my family, such as now, and please, for what my father, he worked very hard for all these years, many he can tell us what to do and not to do.
Anybody else in the third row?
Don Moore, 2677 Telegraph, Northeast. I spoke here two weeks ago in opposition to Senate Bill 236, and I won't regurgitate everything, but I do want to make a couple of points. I represent Cecil County on the Maryland Agland Preservation Board of Directors. To date, we have over a quarter of a million acres in the state of Maryland that are under easement. These folks have volunteered to preserve these farms. Cecil County has over 50 farms on a waiting list right now, waiting for funding for preservation. Preservation works. Don't steal away the property rights. Farmers work the land, live off the land, and don't want to see their farms develop. And if asked to forfeit their property rights, there needs to be some compensation. If this bill is truly about land preservation, let's put these farms under easement and have them there for perpetuity. Thank you.
Jackwood, Port Deposo. I was supposed to be the first voice in support of, I would say, in support of map number four is the closest thing that I think our comprehensive plan was all about. I was one of those 41 people that was on the comprehensive plan. And as I looked at the various maps and I looked at the plan, as I sat in the meeting where the people from NDP came up and critiqued the map for all that we had put together, what they did was do it against each of our own maps. And they looked at each one and they said, yeah, this works, this works, this works, this works. And they had very few comments on the tiers map number four. There were a couple of errors, but in general terms, what our comprehensive plan and all its supporting maps do isn't about the same as what the tier four map does. I'm as concerned about the focus. We really should be focusing on our tiers one and two and getting that infrastructure in there where we need it and trying to honor that as much as possible. And the more we do develop out in our rural areas, the more or the less investment we can put in our tier one and tier two areas. I spent a lot of time at the work session on the citizens' corner earlier, so I'll stop my remarks there, but I would like to talk to you guys some more about my view of the world and what I heard at your meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else in, or start with Row five, or Row four, excuse me?
My name is George Allen. I live at 35 Oak Street, Corborum. I want to reiterate some of what Rupert just said. I speak tonight in favor of tier map four because, like Rupert, I believe that map is based on our comprehensive plan and it supports the objectives of our comprehensive plan. The COM Plan is more than just a nice bunch of words about managing growth, supporting a vital agricultural economy, encouraging new jobs, and preserving the county's rural heritage. Everybody says that they support such things, but the plan is also a call to action. Its Chapter 11 is titled "Implementation," and it urges that specific policies be adopted to make the plan work. Apparently, few people have read that format because, as the 2010 plan notes, the previous comprehensive plan recommended that the county establish a group of mechanisms to manage growth, things like impact fees and an APFO. But most of these tools were never implemented. Little has changed in the two years since the new plan was adopted. The new state law, SB 236, is far from perfect, but it is the law. And one way to look at it is that it calls our laws on what we claim our comprehensive plan is important to us. My view of the tier map four is that it actually goes a long way toward actually putting our comprehensive plan into action. I think that map four, and specifically the extent of tier four on that map, does three positive things to the county. First, it will free the taxpayers from having to support more inefficient, large-scale sprawl housing development in our rural areas. We all know that these developments have not and do not pay for themselves. The people who profit from them like to talk about the free market and property rights, but the reality is that they're actually counting on the rest of us to pay for the county's infrastructure that is needed to support their projects. If we really want to keep future taxes low, the best policy is to keep our rural areas in agriculture. Second, the map limits future increases in groundwater nitrogen through septic systems, which is actually one of the main objectives of the new law, SB 236. This will have a positive effect on our straights and rivers and help us achieve our Chesapeake Bay cleanup goals. Increasing groundwater and nitrogen from new septic systems is another off-the-books cause of sprawl housing that we all end up paying for in a degraded environment. Dirtier water, more algae, but fewer fish. Third, because the map encourages new growth in areas where we want it and limits it elsewhere, it actually has a good chance of providing the much-needed jumpstart to the county's transfer of development rights program. This program could be an important tool in helping farmers who want to continue farming to recover value for their land, but it will work only if there is a demand for additional development rights in the designated growth areas. Although some claim that the map devalues rural development, I believe exactly the opposite is true because the value of such rights depend on demand in the designated growth area. As long as it's cheap and easy to build in the rural areas, that demand may never arise. So I ask you to support the comprehensive plan, not just in words, but in deeds, and vote for tier map four. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in Row four? If not, then we'll go to Row five.
My name is Hugh McGadd. I live at 1547 Elk Road Road. And I had a PERC test done in accordance with the minus end division. Now, I read this anticipation of the fact that my children, when they heard that I may want to develop those three months. So I'm curious, the interpretation says 18 months after the PERC test. Now, my PERC test was done, I would say, 20 and a half years ago. Whether or not this needs to be clarified, or this means I have to have a knee-put. In this particular case, I'm interested in clarification. Otherwise, I don't have any particular input related to tier four. Thank you.
Is this a point of where Mr. Stedstrom or someone from the health department could help you with regard to the PERC test? If you would contact their office, they can help you.
Yeah, I guess the interpretation says that preliminary approval is made 18 months after PERC test approval. So my PERC test approval was more than 18 months ago than less than, say, three years ago. So the question is, do I have to have a knee done, or can I have to put a preliminary plot in? Talk to someone.
Yeah. Is there anyone else in Row five?
I'm Dirk, 724 Conawiggo Road, Conawiggo, Maryland. And I was on the comprehensive plan review committee, it was motion to be down. But I gave him this thought, and I am joined him with the majority of my fellow rural landowners to object to the state concocting for a tiered land use designation system. And it is designed to confiscate property rights on over 50% of Cecil County rural land acreage. The so-called SB 236 continues, "The incremental rate by local government of property rights by further limiting land use choices, which reduces the number of prospective property buyers, which in turn reduces land backs." I have no problem with preserving ag land and woodlands, or with the concept of zoning. I have the right way and the wrong way to accomplish this. During my recent vacation, I crossed paths with a Midwesterner who was developing the local land use plan. He told me that Maryland was used as an example of how not to do land use planning. Government has been quick to benefit chosen landowners of high density for local zoning uses. Therefore, the responsible government should be at least cooperative in working out programs to compensate rural landowners for downzoning or confiscation of property rights by the zoning process. There's no doubt in my mind that this law is unconstitutional under the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. However, the state has done a clever job writing this bill, and the state does not do the downzoning, but uses extortion tactics, tactics, pressure the counties to do their dirty work. Therefore, it's questionable whether the state really has the authority to enforce SB 236 and use retaliatory tactics for non-compliance. Let's put this in perspective. This property rights grant presents a learning precedent. If the state gets away with this major property rights grant from rural landowners, what is to stop them from confiscating the property rights of residential property owners? Affordable housing for low and middle-income families in short supply, and past government attempts to rectify this situation have not succeeded. The federal bipartisan housing legislation of 1999 was a bust of major proportions from which we have not recovered from to this day. So for the next effort, what is to do with the state for downzoning randomly selected residential areas into affordable housing districts? An affordable housing district, defined as his own, or residential property, properties can only be sold for $80,000 or less. That was the state of you in a home in a downzoned affordable housing district, that you would only be able to sell that property for $80,000. That's, this is not too far-fetched, considering the Marxist ideology that's been floating around the airwaves recently. Should the responsible government work out a system to help you to lose the value of your property? Rural landowners have compromised enough in the zoning process. There is only one solution here. Back up the SB 236 material and send it back to Governor O'Malley with a statement, "We don't like your program. Cecil County will stick with our own little league of constitutional land use plan." Thank you.
Is there anyone else in Row five? Okay, we'll move on to Row six.
Walter Rosansky, 33, Woodhome Way. I don't really have a real strong position on this issue, but I did attend all the comprehensive planning meetings that the commissioners had about the issue. I have to agree with Rupert Rosetti, I hope I got his name right. He gave a pretty factual synopsis of what happened in most of those meetings with the state. And I'm glad some of it's on tape, and I hope if people want to look at it on tape, it all stays on tape. Thank you.
Anybody else in Row five? We'll move on to Row six.
Hi, I'm George, 848 Orange Town Road. I was asked to come here, hurried to Maryland that way, and the big thing I would like to say is I'm sort of setting in the middle of a fundamental program. And I appreciate the members, what you're doing, and I still agree with John Malinsky. John Malinsky, myself, and Auntie, are in the little area that we're being squeezed in and surrounded, and sort of being forced to help out and help out the role I'm taking. But anyway, thank you.
I reside at 583 Turkey Point Route in northeast Maryland. I'm here as a resident of Cecil County. I'm a real estate agent with production blocks in Roach, and I represent the land that is for sale, known as WAPD, which is a conference center on Turkey Point Route. I'm opposed to send Bill 236, and that formed by comments in the form of questions, so I would like those questions addressed. The question that myself and my client have is, why and how was the map developed? It doesn't appear to be based on soil permeability because it doesn't look like a soils map, so it would appear that it would be based on density, yet on that peninsula, there is a high density of use in the form of the, obviously, the state park and conference centers of Stany Cove, Sandy Hill, WAPD, and North Bay. So our question is, how was that developed? It's not based on protecting the order of the bay, because that's already been addressed in the zoning of the critical zone, 1,000-foot setback. So it is our opinion that what the state is using is a conservation by legislation instead of purchasing the land from the landowner. Whenever you take away the developable ability of land, you take value. So what the state is doing is, when they had an opportunity to turn this into conservation land by purchasing that, they have chosen to use legislation to take the value from the landowner. Our question then is, is there another opportunity to have a meeting such as this? There were two dates mentioned, the 11th and the 18th. Need to know what they are and what the public participation is there. Is there an opportunity for a private meeting with the planning board to make our statement more formal? And will there be a transcript of this meeting? I assume yes. And my last question is, that property had an existing approval for a 300-person use in a onsite septic system is already in place, but yet that was not developed to use that septic system. Is that septic system grandfathered in? Thank you.
Is there anybody else in Row five?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I spoke a little bit earlier in the citizens' corner. I just want to reiterate some comments for the record.
For the record, sorry, you named an address.
I'm sorry. James Kraus, 53, Woods Way, Elkton, Maryland. As we discussed earlier, I think we had concerns. Number one, I think there's, I've heard some things tonight say that Governor O'Malley, whatever his name is, O'Malley, has mandated this, you know, that you have to do this by law. Well, Senate Bill 236 is a law, but it's not necessarily a law that is mandated because it's not a constitutional law that's going to be voted on in this next election. Therefore, it's not changing the Maryland constitution. Article 66B says that the planning and zoning powers lay with right here with the five county commissioners. I think we all agreed to that earlier. And I have faith that you'll make the right decisions, and I've heard a lot of different ideas here this evening, but I go back to something I asked about earlier, and I think President Mullen, I might have got it out of his office, but the map of 2010 of the comprehensive plan is now here with us. You know, we have a comprehensive plan, it's spent many, many hours of people's time of this county to develop, you know? I think I copy the comprehensive plan map, I sign it, and send it down with best regards and say, this is what we're going to follow until we need to do something else. I highly encourage you to look out for, one of the things I really am concerned about in this county is, we're a growing county. We've got to face reality. We're up here, we're on major highways, we've got water and sewer in some areas. We hope to extend more water and sewer. But, you know, we need affordable housing. Our children need a place to live that's affordable, and you can't look across all these things. I think this is often looked at in a comprehensive plan, and if we have to do this by December 31st, let's do something that at least has been through task and hearings and input from citizens with a lot of hard work and keep properties to where we know what we're going with. We have a perfect example here this evening, right, wrong, or indifferent, that nobody seems to know. I'm sorry, the planning department knew, but maybe the citizens didn't know, and maybe that's an issue that we have to take as well. I encourage you to use existing comprehensive map or the closest thing to it to go forward with meeting the state of Maryland Department. It's the Department of Planning who's insisting this be done, you know, or you can send them a Dear John letter, I don't care.
Is there anybody else in Row six?
My name is Nick Lisa, I'm at 1 Deer Run Parkway in Elkton, Maryland. I would like to call your attention to owners' individual rights. The currently existing property owners, whether a farmer or property developer, have purchased their property based on their individual needs as well as complying with local existing planning and zoning regulations. Our local planning and zoning office, with input from the county residents, new walkers in the best interest of Cecil County. Now, hocken outsiders make decisions that would run counter to our existing regulation. There is a big difference from the heavily populated sewer-water counties versus the rural heavily septic tank areas. If we allow this to happen to Cecil County without the county voicing vigorous opposition to their assigning the various tiers to our properties, we do not begin to complain about it later. The unintended consequences begin with the tax assessor telling us assessments will be revenue-neutral. However, in order to do that, the land that is no longer developed or restricted in any way will or should be reduced, but to be revenue-neutral, other properties reclassified would have to increase their assessments to keep the tax revenue-neutral. Again, this is an attempt of big government gradually confiscating our freedom and our individual rights. And I ask you, why did actor and me say, "Give me liberty or give me death"?
My name is Dr. Gloria Hildy, and I live at 532 Fire Tower Road in Corborum, Maryland. We have three parcels of land that all connected to each other, and the original was 13 points on there, our acres. Parcel that was where I built my house, and we bought two-plus acres of the house next door, and then the farm behind us sold off some land, and so we bought pasture behind that. We kind of run it all together, and I have the same problem the other person had, that planning and zoning changes my house zoning to residential all the time, and when I bought it, it was zoned agricultural, residential, and so my taxes on my house property keep jumping up because they keep changing it to residential. And theoretically, I shouldn't be having cows and horses and occasionally pigs or chickens or whatever on my house property, but I do because that has pasture and so on. And they keep changing it back, and so I've gone down a couple of times and asked them to fix it back to agricultural, and they keep changing it back to residential because the houses next door are residential. And so theoretically, I'm breaking the law by having cows and horses and things on my house, but that's the way it is. But I do feel like it's not right for me to take away people's property rights by, not you personally, but the Senate bill takes away people's property rights. And so I do agree with these other people that if there's some way to take a stand and at least go to comprehensive planning map rather than changing or altering and messing with people's property rights, that would be better. Thank you.
Anybody else in Row six? Move on to Row seven.
My name is Betty Vicki, and I live at 15 Clever Road. But I'm here to speak for my mother, who lives on 337 Old Elm Road. Our farm has been in our family for years, and we do hope to pass it on down to our family, but I'm a nurse, I have no desire to continue to farm. So what my mother does with her farm is means how she pays taxes, whether she wants to subdivide and give it to my grandchildren or my great-grandchildren. I think that should be her choice. She's the one that's paid taxes and worked hard for thus far, all these years. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in Row seven? Move on to Row eight.
Jeremy Roswell, 36, Ardenstein, Chesapeake City, Maryland. Like many of the people here, I absolutely disagree with the state doing this. I think that's a very bad precedent in dealing with localities. Plan use should be, a local decision should be made by the local elected officials, appointed officials or the planning commissioner. However, I am in agreement, at least partly, with what this legislation is trying to do. You hear some people in the newspaper talking about open space. I hate that term, but I think it's a terrible term, but, you know, that's not the reason to want to do something like this. But it is, in my opinion, in the best interest of the long-term agricultural economy for this community, and certainly in the best interest of county taxpayers. There was a, I was reading, Langford Farmer, I have a big book full of articles, many of you may know, on back dis. And farmers have put together, I have a great deal of respect for them, put together a lot of very good legitimate concerns. However, I would point out that some of these are misconceptions rather than concerns. And I just want to talk about a few of them. What this will do to tier four is help prevent fragmentation, further fragmentation from them, which is very, very important. Many of the farmers here in this room, cash grain farmers, for instance, they rely on other non-farmer landowners to rent land from. Okay, about 40% of the land, you look at the statistics, about 40% of the farmland in this county is owned by non-farmers. Okay, and if they're allowed to put major subdivisions on that property, all right, that's taken. That's taken one right out of the farmers' minds as they can. That's taken money right out of the farmers minds, they can't till that land anymore. All right? And if you need to have, be able to till circumvaded acres to make, make money on it. And if you don't have access to that land, then you're going to put away business. All right? You need to think about the fragmentation of our agricultural infrastructure. You know, at some point in time, you know, this, we're not the first community in the country that deals with issues like this. And you've seen in other communities across, across the country, where, where development is allowed to come in unimpeded, major subdivisions of rural areas. You know, you track the dealerships, going to pull out, seed dealerships going to pull out, grain storage facilities going to pull out. All right, and that just makes it harder for the farmers that are left to do their job. All right, and you need to think about that. Okay? Mr. Hawes doesn't like it when I said, I said, pass the board. But, you know, what the state's doing is new. However, individual counties in the state and across in the region have done something like this prior, you know, decades ago. In Kent County, did something like this, you know, back in the late eighties. And it was farmers who struck, who put effort. They were the ones coming out in support of those. A dairy farmer, Bill Sutton, farm right there on two thirteen, he was the one who led charge. You can't count it, because it's in the long-term interest of the agricultural economy. Now, I want to talk just very briefly about the, people, everybody here talks about the devalue of property. It's based logical sense. Take away development rights off property, the property's not going to be valued as much. All right? But that's on the basis that farmland's going to be, if you can't develop, it's going to be sold for farmland. All right, well, farmland, I mean, as any farmer, they tell you it's two, three thousand dollars a acre. You know, I don't see too many farms selling this county for two, three thousand dollars a acre. What you have is a bunch of city people from Philadelphia, D C, New York, all the way up again. You know, willing to spend twenty thousand dollars a acre. And I, and you want to, we'll take a really good look at it. Baltimore County, North Park, Baltimore County, Greenspring Valley instituted one to fifty zoning in, I believe, nineteen seventy-nine. You've been down Greenspring Valley, they got a lot of farmland still there in there, one to fifty zoning. If you use your logical reason, you should, farm should be sold for two, three thousand dollars a acre. I challenge anybody here to go down to Greenspring Valley, farm land down in Baltimore County, find a farm that's worth two, three thousand dollars a acre, it's going to sell virtually. All right? It may make logical sense, but it doesn't play out that way in reality. All right? All right, just talk, one, one last thing about the county taxpayers here. Last thing I'll be done. Okay? What this, what I'm thinking about, what this thing, what this legislation is trying to prevent, I think of, saw if anybody lives there, with a development like Chesapeake Isles. My great-grandmother did some psych work on the property back in the sixties. But one of the most expensive parts of the school budget is what? Transportation and busing. If there's, even if there's only one elementary school kid and one high school, junior high school kid, the county still has to spend it. Send one elementary school bus, one high school bus, all the way down to Chesapeake Isles and back up to Elk Hager Northeast, twelve miles. And that's very expensive. And that's a huge burden on the county taxpayer. Thank you.
Anybody else in row seven, and move to eight?
My name is Joseph M. Belgrade. My address is four oh five North St. Augustine Road, South Chesapeake City, Maryland. I'm not able to make any statements in an educated fashion, if you're for, against this program, because I don't know anything about it. My comments would be more philosophical. My family has owned, my family has owned property in Cecil County since nineteen eighty-nine, where Delaware residents. In November of last year, I completed a five-year, very arduous program where I was granted permission from my family to create a subdivision and proudly and at great personal expense moved it to my new home. I subsequently become a resident of Cecil County. And I live there full-time. I'm very proud of my home. Since that time, my tax assessments have changed three times. Every time I get one of these letters, I'm terrified. I received this letter today, dated August twenty-seventh, notifying me of this very potentially significant development in my life and in my sole property. So I, I don't, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I don't know how you could disrespect me more telling me about something that impacted me potentially substantially and finding out about it today. I think I'm a physician. I think you are all obviously intelligent people. I think you should understand that the vast public is distrustful of government. The bigger the government, the less trustful we are. I, I know as a physician, what a silly thing our medical community is going through right now on a bill that is, was passed without most people even reading it. I think this very likely has similar and likely sinister undertones to it. And I, you know, I don't, I don't know how you can, how you can do this to me. It's simple.
Anyone else in row eight? If not, we'll move to row nine. Row ten. Eleven. Twelve. Is there anybody standing in the doorway that would like to come forward?
Hi, Donna called out one fourteen Long Drive. And I've been standing in the back listening. And I just want to say that I oppose O'Malley's plan. But I also oppose this tier map. And I want to, I had some things written down, but I want to address some issues that some people brought up. I oppose it because I do oppose taking property rights. I'm here to support the farmers and the landowners that are trying to prevent their property rights that are being stolen. This violates the Fifth Amendment and goes against the wishes of the landowners. Now, I want to let people know that, that I haven't mentioned in that, I don't believe anybody's mentioned in the room tonight. O'Malley's plan is a bad plan. But the state has given the county the authorities to submit the tier map. And it is in the county commissioner's hands, and I want everybody to know that. And the two commissioners that are willing to submit the least restricted maps are Commissioner Hodge and Commissioner Moore. And I want to thank you for that. Tier four map. Tier four map was approved by Commissioner Romell, Commissioner Mullin, and Commissioner Dunn. They are taking away your property rights. Now, I believe that we, you are going to submit a map. Whether we have the right to do it or whether it's right or wrong, I believe that in the end, a map will be submitted. But I believe that some scare tactics are being used. I watched one of the videos and Commissioner Romell said, make sure you tell people it's the state. Well, it's on video, I mean, it's, she said.
Well, we're not calling people's names.
Okay.
I'm going to stay on topic.
But my, my point is, is that you can't hide behind the state. And, you know, there's on one of the blogs, Delegate Schiegel's not here, that talks about property rights. And he did say that most, and this is on his website, most local officials are unprepared to fight the state and risk arrest or fines. That is false. Commissioner Hodge asked the state, when they came for the planning meeting, what are the consequences? And they said, there are none. You submit the map and we can make recommendations. That's all they're going to do. So it is up to the five commissioners here to not hide behind O'Malley's plan. You have the authority, and the people need to know that you have the authority to submit the least restricted map. Thank you.
Good evening. Elizabeth Jane Ward. I'm on the other end of the county, down in Earlville, nine ninety-six Cherry Grove Road. I'm also representing my sisters at six eighty Cherry Grove Road, which is Cherry Grove Farm, a historic home, which is the birthplace of the first popularly elected governor of the state of Maryland. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. I love my country. I love Cecil County. I love my farm. And I'm a single woman farmer. And I love my family. I would love to give my twenty-seven-year-old son, who is struggling to make it through the world on a small amount of pay for the education that he does have, the opportunity to also live on my farm. I live in a barn. Yes, I live in a barn. My barn and my house are attached to one another. I can't give him another piece of property on my farm. We can no longer develop Cherry Grove Farm, because my father, in his infinite wisdom, wanted to keep all four of his daughters on the farm. And he gave each one of us a piece of property. We all know what four means. I'm going to give you a number that I want you to consider. Two million, sixty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars and zero cents. I had to practice writing that amount. That is the amount I had to write as the executor of my parents' estate to the federal government for state taxes. Would you please tell me how I can ever recoup that money? Or my sisters and I could ever recoup that money? When you take away our rights? Additionally, on a personal level, I am also the recipient, through inheritance, along with my sisters, of an EPA-remediated super fund site in the state of Delaware, which I can't give away, but I still dutifully paid my taxes on that with my sisters every year. I love my farm. I love my family. I love Cecil County. I love to get up every morning and look at the sunrise. I like to see the sunset on the B C Cove. I'd like to continue to be able to live here with the option, as I am turning sixty in two weeks, of maybe being able to sell my property at some time and make some money out of it. Thank you very much.
My name's Elizabeth Holt. I live at thirty-three Charlotte Lane, and I own, northeast Maryland. And I own three parcels of property, around eight by acres. I owned a tanker pond and fifteen acres of swamp that has tidal water. And then I probably have other swamp area. And I pay high prices in taxes. The land, my father was an uncle, actually born on the street. The land's been in the family for about five generations. And my grandmother's legacy to us, after she sold away probably fifty lots to neighbors and friends, is for all of us to live there and to keep subdividing it. And therefore, there's still more people to keep the land to. When I was left for college, I was told that my parents had to sell that property and for me to go to college. Well, I didn't think that my uncles and my fathers could sell the property. I didn't think that I should be the chosen one. Five cousins and my brothers, I shouldn't be one of ten, so I...